Call to order, the November 13th, 2017, the Latrobe City Council meeting. Please stand for the pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, united in this with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask for a moment of silence to give thanks, to ask for guidance, or to just quietly relax. Roll call, Wayne.
Mr. Murtha?
Here.
Mrs. Weller?
Here.
Mr. Forish?
Here.
Mr. Baldneri?
Here.
Ms. Beasley?
Here.
Mr. Bartel?
Here.
And Ms. Merrow.
Here.
All present.
At this time, I'd like an approval of the minutes for the October 10th, 2017 meeting. May I have a motion, please?
I move the minutes for the October 10th, 2017 meeting be approved and accepted and permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have an approval? May I have a motion to approve the fiscal department reports and the pay bills for the month of October 2017?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Murtha, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Baldneri. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have our citizens' request portion of the meeting. I would ask residents to state their name and address if they'd like to address council and try to limit their comments to three to five minutes.
We're starting.
I'm sorry. Well, they don't have agendas, so they don't know what's on the agenda. So, sorry, Wayne. They don't... So, go back to the mic. Oh, ma'am. Ma'am, please. Yeah, I can't do that tonight, so...
Woo! Man, you're interesting. Wow. Hi.
Hi.
Most people know me as Cassandra. My name is Sandra McCune. I reside at 509 Main Street, Latrobe. And my issues... Does everyone want to cover any of my issues? I don't like to see all of the directives that are left on the sidewalks, like, month after month. And there's just some unsafe things, round tunnels I have discussed with Mike. Like, for instance, I will bring a case in point. Latrobe Rapperty Building has a huge... There's a pipe there and a big valley there. You know, I walk a lot and I see a lot of unsafe sidewalks and sidewalks that aren't disability, ADA, you know, standards. Like, for instance, why doesn't St. Vincent have an ADA sidewalk? I heard they pull in at least a thousand a day. And I just think that we need more things to be mandated, like, the building on Leganera looks like somebody pulled the Titanic out of the ocean, paint that's peeling. Like, I'm wondering why the city can't say, "We gotta paint that building." So, those are some of the issues I have. Thank you. But I love Latrobe.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. There's no other comments from the community. We're gonna move on to the next item, which is our student recognition awards. We're really honored tonight to have with us three students from Greater Latrobe High School. We started, I guess it's been a year, about a year ago, we came up with this idea that we wanted to do a student recognition program where the city council recognizes students for exemplary community service and classroom attendance and all those kinds of things. So, we put together a committee comprised of Julie Beasley and Jack Murtha, and they met with the school district and reviewed some resumes. So, I'm gonna let Jack or Julie talk a little bit about the process.
Also, Chief Jim Boomer was on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Chief Boomer. Sorry.
I'm gonna read from my phone, so I don't have the hard copy. The Student Recognition Community Award. We had a... We had some guidelines, thanks to Superintendent Swiger. Must reside within the Greater Latrobe School District and be in grades K through 12. Exhume standards of good character and leadership. Be a person of integrity, helping others, demonstrating initiative. Completing community service activity or activities that provide support for an area of interest or passion. Be a positive role model for the other students and the community members by having good attendance at school and/or work. Must have a positive attitude toward their work, community, and school. This time, we received, I believe, five resumes, and out of these resumes, we picked these three. And all the resumes were outstanding, but these three resumes here stood out.
Anything you wanna add?
No.
Okay, so it's... This is our second award presentation. Our first group was last year, and it was awarded to a group of students who had gone to Haiti. And so, we are honored tonight to recognize Victoria Potter, if you wanna stand up, Alexandria Potter, and Christopher Potter. And yes, they are tripling. So, I could sit here and read through their resume. While I'm speaking with Mrs. Elder, I'm gonna ask her... Or is it John?
It's Mr. Main.
Mr. Main. Okay. Mr. Maines, I'm gonna ask you to tell us a little bit about these three exemplary students.
Sure. First of all, as a principal, these... When you look at these three students, these are the three that exemplify the perfect student. I get to start my day every morning with Victoria in the office. She does our morning announcements for us, always smiling, upbeat, gets a student started off, and they're working for the right tone to start the day. Christopher did his Eagle Scout project for us. He kinda revamped our courtyard area. He purchased new tables, planted trees. Trees stayed alive through the summer. It just kinda livened the entire area up. Our students are able to walk through that courtyard when the weather's nice, and so it kinda beautifies their day as well. So, he did a really nice job. Alex, I get to hear... Alex is a skier. I got to go on many ski trips with Alex. One, I can recall, she had a little bit of an injury, but she stayed upbeat and positive through the entire thing. So, all three are superb students, and I can't speak enough or highly enough about them. So, they're a true honor to have. Certainly makes a student body, their administration, and teaching staff proud to have them in the building.
Thank you, Mr. Maines. I'm gonna just read from each of them a few of their... Yes, Mrs. Elder.
If I may say something?
Absolutely.
Those of you who know me know that I'm seldom contented with not saying anything. The Potters moved here because of our school district. They had heard from their Aunt Kathy. Dr. Simmons was a teacher in Hemfield, and she admired the Latrobe School District and thought this would be a good place for them to find an educational home. And since they've come here, they've taken every opportunity that the school district has offered them. And a couple things that John didn't say. While Christopher was doing his Eagle Scout thing, he got the plans for the high school and got an architect's help in measuring and doing sightlines and things like that. And the trees that are planted in the courtyard, which those of you who know the high school know that it's this sort of blank space in the middle of the high school, that you can book out windows from the library, the halls, and so forth, and he planted beautiful dogwood trees, which Mr. Maines did take credit, but he saw that they got water over the summer. And then put in these big, heavy, concrete sort of tables with benches added to them so that kids can go there for a small group meeting, a lunch, whatever, and it makes the courtyard a better place. And Victoria is extremely upbeat. She's on the student council. She's always helping somebody do something. And Alexandria does something that is completely hidden from everybody because she's the wildcat. So, I had to put those things in, or you might not have known about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. I just wanna read a few examples of the community service that these amazing young people have done. First, I have Victoria's. Adopt a Highway Program, Special Olympic Ski Program, Children's Museum, South Carolina, when she was there, Pet Helpers, YMCA Youth Mentors, Lake 93 Memorial, School Volunteer for miscellaneous events, Library Aid, Wildcat Run, Special Olympics, Red Cross High School Leadership Program, National Map Corps of U.S. Geology Survey. Wow. And I could... That's just a few. And that was Victoria's. Alexandria's, I have Adopt a Highway Program, YMCA Youth Membership, Lake 93 Memorial, Office Aid, Ninth Grade, Pet Helpers, High Acres Childcare, Red Cross Leadership Program, Children's Museum, Turtle Patrol... What's that?
Okay.
What's Turtle Patrol?
In South Carolina, we live there in the summers, so they have a lot of sea turtles that come up on the beach and lay their eggs. So, they need people in the community to, like, take care and make sure that, like, tourists and other people don't step on those eggs or, like, ruin them in any way, and we help them get to the water.
And that's cool. That's cool. Certainly something we wouldn't know about here. And Christopher. Adopt a Highway Program, Children's Museum, Pet Helpers, High Acres Preschool, YMCA Youth Membership, Red Cross High School Program, Nine Eleven Memorial, numerous scout volunteer activities, National Maps Corps for U.S. Geological Survey. So, that's just a few examples of what these young folks have done outside of school, and they all have outstanding GPAs and outstanding academic records. So, it is really an honor for you to be here today, and we are very proud and honored to award you this award. So, if you would... Three would come forward, we're gonna conduct that. Victoria, Alexandria, and Christopher, on behalf of the Latrobe City Council and the residents of Latrobe, we award you with the Student Recognition Award. It says, "The City of Latrobe, along with the Greater Latrobe School District, wish to recognize you for your outstanding academic achievements and your continuous service to the city and the school district." Christopher?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Victoria.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, congratulate you. And then I'd ask them if they would please tell us a little bit about yourselves. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Tell us a little bit about yourselves and your future plans.
Hi. How old are you guys?
Back porch, please.
Thank you all for this awesome recognition. It's really an honor. Thank you. With all the volunteer work and all the extra things we've done, it really doesn't count to call it volunteer work, 'cause it doesn't feel like work. It's just what makes us happy, and it, like, I get such a good time out of it, honestly, it's not even work for me. I don't plan on stopping anytime soon, because what is life without a busy scheduling? I hope to attend the University of Notre Dame. That's number one right now, so the process of appointing colleges is a big priority at the moment, and hopefully I get them. Thank you again.
Hi, I'm Christopher Potter, and first of all, I'd just like to thank Mr. Maines, Mrs. Elder, Swiger, all the committee members. Thanks so much. You really mean a lot. And, I don't know, pretty much I got it, Alexandria. Volunteering has been part of our lives ever since. I don't know how long. Been a while. But I just love helping other people and, like, doing what I like and just... I'm always scout, so I always help other people and just get merit badges and do the best I can, and it really means a lot. And I also wanna go to Notre Dame, but I want to be... I really don't really wanna be that, but either an FBI agent or something in business. And, yeah, it's fun. So, thanks again.
Hello, I'm Victoria Potter. We're all really humbled to be here tonight. Thank you so much again. I've heard it a lot, but I'm gonna say thanks to Mr. Maines, Mrs. Elder, Mrs. Swiger, and my mom, and my dad, and my aunt, and my siblings. But, yeah, Latrobe is my home, and, like, I know I'm not originally from here, but I love it with all my heart. And, like, just, I get involved in so much at school, and, like, all my friends are like, "Why do you just do stuff out like that?" And I'm like, "Because I love it, and 'cause, like, I love Latrobe, and I'll do anything to help it." So, yeah, thanks again, and I wanna go to Notre Dame, too, and I wanna be a vet, actually, so it's gonna be some hard work, but I'm ready. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and I would be remiss if I did not recognize the family of these three amazing students, Mr. and Mrs. Potter and Aunt Kathy. Behind every great student is a phenomenal family and parents, so we thank you for being here tonight, and let's all give these kids and this family a big round of applause. There are boxes for your awards if you wanna take them with you when you leave, so you have something... Something to carry them in, okay? Okay, moving on to the boring stuff. Committee reports. We have nothing from finance, I don't think, at this point. We're still reviewing the budget items. I do have something I wanna talk about in executive session related to the budget, but we'll do that towards the end. Is that okay?
Under new business.
Under new business? Okay. What's the matter, Zach? You're looking at me like I... I don't have it on the agenda.
No, do you... You wanna go to executive session?
No, you're gonna do business.
No, I wanna... Well, that's something different. I do wanna go to executive session. What's the matter?
It's a personnel matter.
Okay? All right. Do you have anything for finance? Anything for the finance committee? I don't have anything.
I'm not on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. You are, now. No, okay. Public safety.
We have nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Personnel. Anyone update us on that?
I believe we are going to be starting interviewing on Wednesday for the city secretary to...
Events Committee, Jerry, Jack.
Still waiting to hear from Alex.
We're gonna meet with him tomorrow morning at 9:30. Find out where he's at.
Okay. I'll be there.
I did talk to him today about final roundup report on the finance split. He said it's on his list of things to do. He said he'll have it to us by the end of the month. What'd he tell me? Parking Committee? Anything?
No.
Board of Authority reports. LMA, nothing.
Nothing.
Department of Reports, Mike?
No report, Mayor.
Sergeant Angus?
No report.
Memory blank there. Resiliency's not here. Ann?
I can't record, please.
Ooh, we hit the jackpot tonight. Okay, Zach, you're up.
First item is under the Police Department. It's a resolution entitled Appointing Member to Latrobe Civil Service Commission. This resolution would appoint Herbert Plummer to the Latrobe Civil Service Commission to fill an unexpired term, which is set to expire on January 31, 2026.
Do I...
This is Resolution 2017-35. Mr. Bartel?
Do we need a motion and a second?
I'm sorry. All right. Let's get that.
Boy, we ruined this far. I must have ruined you, though. I know you did.
I'll make that motion.
Is this an... Wait, is this an appointment?
Yes.
Okay, so I make the appointment, and so we just need...
You can make the appointment, and someone could second you.
Okay, I make the appointment for Herbert Plummer for the civil service. I need a second.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Jones?
All right. Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Baldneri?
Yes.
Ms. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Murtha?
Yes.
Ms. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
And Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Seven. Next item on the agenda, under Administration and Finance Department. This is a motion item. The motion is to authorize the solicitor to prepare and advertise an ordinance approving the 2018 budget.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item under Administration and Finance Department is authorize payment of two invoices totaling $12,900 to the Latrobe GLSD Parks and Recreation Authority. This is actually two motion items, because there's two invoices. The first motion is to approve and make payment on the invoice of J.J. Hauser in the amount of $7,950, as presented to council by Greater Latrobe Parks and Recreation.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Beasley. May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Let's come out of the 200,000.
Yes.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next is a motion to approve and make payment on the invoice of Richard Russo in the amount of $4,950, as presented to council by Greater Latrobe Parks and Recreation.
May I have a motion to approve payment of this bill?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Beasley. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartel. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding the Citizens Fiber Agreement. This is the resolution entitled Resolution of the City of Latrobe Authorizing the Execution of a Cable Franchise Agreement between the city and Citizens Fiber. This resolution specifically approves the franchise agreement that was negotiated by special counsel.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Forish. May I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Murtha. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Jones?
Resolution 2017-36. Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Baldneri?
Yes.
Mr. Murtha?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Ms. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
And Mayor Walker?
Yes.
All in favor?
The next item on the agenda is an ordinance entitled Approving an Employee Handbook. This ordinance will enact and approve the employee handbook that's attached to this Exhibit A, setting forth the uniform personnel system and policy of the City of Latrobe.
You said this was a resolution?
It's an ordinance.
An ordinance, okay. May I have a motion to enact an ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Murtha. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Baldneri. Any questions or discussions? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Murtha?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Baldneri?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Ms. Beasley?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
And Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Seven.
The next item on the agenda is an ordinance. The ordinance is entitled An Ordinance of the City of Latrobe, County of Westmoreland and Commonville, Pennsylvania, amending Chapter 132 of the City of Latrobe Code, adding a new Article II entitled Quality of the Community to Establish Quality of Community Standards in Violation Ticket Process. This ordinance sets forth a variety of offenses that are considered to be violations of the code, generally property maintenance related items that allow for the code enforcement officer to provide notice, a quick ticket, and hopefully a quick resolution of the violations. The appropriate act would be to make a motion to approve and enact the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve and enact the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Who'd you get? Second.
Jerry. Stop being mad.
Okay. Any questions or discussions? Mr. Jones?
This is Ordinance 2017-11. Ms. Beasley?
Yes.
Mrs. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Baldneri?
Yes.
Mr. Murtha?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
And Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Seven.
The last action item on the agenda is a motion. This is a motion to authorize the solicitor to advertise the disorderly house ordinance for consideration during the December 11, 2017 regularly scheduled council meeting.
May I have a motion, please? This is a motion to advertise.
Okay.
May I have a motion to authorize the solicitor to advertise?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Beasley. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartel. Any questions or discussion?
I just really like to encourage the public to come out and hopefully show their support for this. You know, our meetings are sometimes sparsely attended, but I think it would be nice to hear the community really support some efforts to try and take care of some of the buildings that have been causing problems around the city.
And we keep our meetings moving, and they're really short, so we try to do something fun, so it's not that boring. Any other questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's it for the agenda items. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay, under new business, I have something. Okay. So, I'm gonna pass out to you. Wayne and I met today with the Greater Latrobe School District to talk about, to revisit the possibility of outsourcing our tax collection. I'm giving this to everyone now so that we can digest it and ask questions, so we can have a good discussion about it at the Agenda Prep session. What you'll notice on the page that says Greater... Well, they both say Greater Latrobe School District, but on the one page that says, you see the total four-year cost, $157,000. That's the estimated cost savings to the school district if we outsource our tax collection. And on the back page is the estimated cost savings for the City of Latrobe if we were to outsource our tax collection. Those of you that were on council may remember that when we went with Burkheimer for the county collection, we actually realized a pretty significant increase in our collections through Burkheimer than we did doing it ourselves. So, that's one thing to consider. I just think, you know, it's something that we need to think about. We need to think about improving our efficiencies and, you know, cost savings for all of us in the school district and in the community. So, Dan Watson, the business manager from Greater Latrobe High School, would be happy to talk to any of you guys if you're interested in more information, and I would like us to, you know, do some homework over the next two weeks and have an open discussion about this at the Agenda Prep meeting.
Can I ask a question now?
Sure.
This might just be a naive question. Is this gonna cost anybody their job here in this...
I don't think so. I mean, I think that, you know, I wouldn't look at it that way. I wouldn't plan on eliminating a job. I think if you look at, you know, the amount of money the city was charging the school district prior to the 2018 year, it's almost a revenue wash, and I think there's enough work down there. I think there could be some redistribution of duties. We could maybe look to some other things that we could do with that resource. So, I was not intending... So I was not intending for it to be the elimination of a job.
What do we do for these elderly homeowners that don't have computers?
Well, you wouldn't, I mean, you don't have to pay by computer, but one of the things that I did find out is that if we would go with Burkheimer, and I'm not saying we would, but I know Burkheimer will send someone here one or two days a week to do the collections if we so desire. I know that, you know, our office hours are eight to four. You can mail it by check, so you don't have to do it on the computer. So, you know, I'm sure we could work through those obstacles, or if they're willing to bring someone here, you know, a day a week to take collections, that people want to come in. I just think that, you know, I think Wayne, you were going to give me the number when we come in two weeks of how many people actually come into the city to pay their taxes. So I just think it's something we need to consider. It's a lot of money, a lot of potential savings. Anyone else have anything under new business? Okay. Since we have like the citizens' request open forum, you can skip that. City managers report?
Just a couple quick items. Just a reminder that the transfer station will be closed on Saturday. We always close a day after the Thanksgiving holiday, because we never get any, it was very limited activity anyway, so that, you know, the Saturday after the Thursday, Friday holiday, the transfer station will be closed. And on, I talked to the union on Christmas, because they have Christmas Eve, which falls on a Sunday, our contract requires that they then automatically get Monday off. But Monday is Christmas, so they're going to, they're going to take Monday and Tuesday. We just kind of get in line with our contract, just to give you an FYI, they'll be off. So they'll be off basically Christmas Day and the day after Christmas. It'll be their Christmas Eve. That.
And now? Okay, under the managers report, I just wanted to update everyone that on Thursday, we had a meeting over at Sixth Ward Fire Hall, where we invited the residents along Mary Street. We had probably 10, 15 people there to talk about the Homes Built Hope Project that's going on along Mary Street, the demolition of those dilapidated houses, and, you know, how that was going to be handled, and we wanted to open that up to concerns and questions of the residents. We had good discussion, I thought. We had some good questions. I think the residents are enthusiastic and, you know, had some concerns with which I think the redevelopment authority and Homes Built Hope folks that were there allayed those fears. So this is going to be a really good, good project for the community. I was thinking about that. It's almost going to be like waterfront property, because once they build those houses back there, you're not going to be able to build between there and the creek. So it's a really good thing. Anybody else have anything else we could go to the order? If not, I'd like to go into executive session for, discuss the matter of personnel. We will come back for adjournment, and that will be it, so. Okay? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I just mention that that ant face service for the supporters of the opioid issues is going to be December 14 at 5:00 p.m. at the Prayer Garden on Main Street, the Presbyterian Church. So put that on your calendars, and we'll talk about it.
What time?
5:00 p.m.
Oh, I remember that time.
On the 14th.
Okay, thank you. Anything else we need to know?
We haven't typed anything yet for holiday season, just...
They're working, the events committee is working on the, what do you call it? Light Up Night Christmas Day, the Friday after?
Stand at the Park.
Stand at the Park. Yeah.
I think I saw, there was an email a while ago that was advertising.
There was?
Yeah, from the Chamber.
Yeah. And I talked to Alan today, and that's, you know, they're all ready to go for that, and there will be a parade, and then Santa's coming in on the fire truck and all that stuff. Right?
Jerry and I didn't get it. Yeah. I didn't get the email.
You didn't get the email? Did you check your City of Latrobe email?
I don't think I have. Everybody has one.
All right, well, we'll take care of that. Okay. We're going to go to executive session now. Thank you again. Thank you very much.